Then Supervisor Jeff Sertie will lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Dear God, thank you for today. And please keep us safe throughout this entire day. And God, you know the shock and the sorrow that the events of these days have spread across the world. We are helpless before the evil that afflicts us, and therefore we cry out to you for comfort and protection. Lord, it is your gracious will that we live together in harmony and peace, so please defeat the plans of those who would stir up violence and strife in the world, destroy the weapons of those who delight in war and bloodshed, especially in Afghanistan, and according to your will end all conflicts in the world. Stretch forth your almighty arm to strengthen and protect those who serve in our armed forces, especially those serving on foreign soil. Support them and keep them from all evil, giving them courage and protection as they serve us. We also ask you to bless and protect our police, our sheriffs, our firefighters, and all our first responders as they serve us, especially as they put themselves into very dangerous situations. And finally, Almighty God, once again, we give you thanks that through the different gifts of the members of this board, you provide for the ongoing care of Pinal County. Lord, cause these supervisors to recognize and to act on every single opportunity for a successful service, and send your spirit upon them that everything they think, say, and do may be for the common good of all people and the glory of your name. In you we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Would you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you, gentlemen. First item of business is called to the public. So consideration and discussion and comments from the public, those wishing to address the Pinal County Board of Supervisors may appear in person or submit in writing, which shall be submitted to the clerk of the board by closed business hours of 5:00 PM the day prior to the meeting. Comments shall be no more than 250 words. Actions taken or as a result of the public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter and research the matter for further consideration and discussion at a later date. And I know we do have some comments that have been submitted to the clerk's office. Am I correct?
Yes, Chairman, that is correct.
So I'm going to have you read those first before I call out to the audience.
Shay Cardell. Pinal County is an ethnically and economically diverse community with no need for any equity coordinator. Such would be a total waste of taxpayer money that could be better used in other ways such as law enforcement. COVID vaccines are free and readily available to all residents. James Spiegel from Oracle, Arizona. Continuation of HUD policies. I hope you have read the 303-page document. I understand that one condition of accepting the money will place unreasonable restrictions on police and/or law enforcement related to peaceful protest, something that has nothing to do with what benefits Pinal County residents. Whose agenda is this? Hopefully not yours. It is totally unacceptable to hamstring law enforcement like this. Accepting this money diminishes your freedoms and the police's ability to keep us safe. I urge you to vote no for this grant and any grant with dangerous restrictions. Regarding Pinal County Health Department grant, the immunization services proposal is designed to rein you in and make Pinal County Health Services subservient for COVID issues to a contractor, an unelected COVID czar, executing what is clearly Washington's and Phoenix woke agenda. How do I know it's woke? What the heck is vaccine equity? I encourage you to ax for the 3.387 million in a counterproposal with more Pinal County control that augments the already effective health organization you already have in place. Otherwise, I urge you to vote no. Regarding broadband for the copper corridor, I urge you to approve this worthwhile infrastructure project. It will benefit the copper corridor by opening economic opportunities in an area that has struggled. Also, when copper corridor benefits, so will all of Pinal County. Thank you for the opportunity to share my views. I hope you will take them into account as you make your decisions. Carol Lee Bailey, Saddle Brook Ranch, Oracle, Arizona. I'm writing in reference to the intergovernment agreement in the item referencing the Public Health Department seeking a grant for vaccine equity coordinator. I would like to ask the supervisors this question. Using your common sense and common knowledge, can you really believe that this is a necessary position that will truly help the people of Pinal? Or is it just a hiring of another bureaucrat adding to our already bloated government workforce? I would like to ask you to define what the IGA means by equity. Webster says it is the ability to be fair and impartial, no bias. Do you really believe that somehow our current vaccine program is unfair or biased or suffers from impartialities? I don't think so. Anyone can get a vaccine from a multitude of easy-to-get-to places. Almost every corner has a Walmart, Walgreens, or CVS. If someone can get their medicines, they can get a vaccine if they want one. There is in no way any uplift in this distribution of the vaccine. It's free and readily available. Why is the board entertaining a proposal to hire someone to make sure there is equity in the distribution and receipt of this vaccine? Everyone who wants their vaccine already has it. No one else wants one. Who is the new coordinator supposed to be vaccinating when everyone who wants one already has it? This looks to me like the usual playbook where the government loves to spend our money on some feel-good project. It's time to stop this willy-nilly do-goodism. I am asking you, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, to use common sense and stop this spending. We do not need an equity coordinator. I would ask that the supervisors reject this clause and keep the rest of the document. There is no racial or economic disparities in Pinal County, so we do not need to add another superflusely disproportionate levels to government body. Deborah Tracy, Saddle Brook Ranch. Regarding the Pinal County Housing Department request for approval of their administrative policies for rental agreement assistance through Section 8, I find some items problematic and troublesome. The policy provides funding for persons who cannot provide proof of citizenship nor any proof of application. One only needs to state they are eligible to receive funding. Without proper vetting, there could be terrorists, drug smugglers, child traffickers, and other criminals living in Pinal County. The policy also provides that if a person does have a criminal history, it cannot be disclosed to the landlord. Another problematic policy requires the police to agree by signature before an attorney that they will interfere with nonviolent protests. Why would a policy for Section 8 housing necessitate this type of language? What defines a nonviolent protest? These policies take away the rights of the residents of Pinal County with regard to public safety and the rights of the police to perform their duties. These are not Democrat or Republican issues. They are safety issues for each and every one of us. Supervisor Kavanoff and other members of the Board of Supervisors, please vote no on these policies. And Chairman, I also have a second comment from Deborah Tracy, which I will be reading a portion of that comment because the previous comment that was read into the record was also by Ms. Tracy, and it does succeed the 250-word count. But each board member has received a copy of the comment in its entirety, and also the full comment is in today's meeting records as well.
Okay. Thank you.
There is no need in Pinal County for a vaccine, excuse me, equity coordinator since there are no disparities in vaccine distribution. 3.4 million for COVID-19 FASIC Nation funding is a waste of taxpayer dollars in exchange for federal control over local government. The website reference to the intergovernment agreement amendment, which is supposed to provide more information, www.healthpeople.gov, is nonexistent. Supervisor Kavanoff and other members of the Board of Supervisors, please vote no to Pinal County Public Health Department's request to add $3.4 million grant for COVID-19. Chairman, those are all the comments that was received in the clerk of the board's office.
Okay. Thank you. Is everybody from the audience? I'd like to call to the public, have comments for the Board of Supervisors at this time. Okay. Oh, okay. Come forth. Name, general location. Three minutes.
My name is Roberto Ravelis, resident of Gold Canyon, and still masking because we in Pinal County still live in a high transmission area. And I encourage you to support public health. It is not extravagant or a waste to save any lives. And so I urge you to approve increased public health services to the public. I attended a meeting this past week of the Apache Junction Unified School District, for example, and, Mr. Chairman, it was alarming to learn that Apache Junction Unified School District is experiencing the highest death fatality count among the 16 school districts in Pinal County. Now, people may ask, well, does that include adults who are associated with the school district? I think that is one of the pieces of information that the Pinal County Public Health Department should clarify because my understanding is that those are students that are dying, and there is no parent alive that would say, oh, if it's costing too much, never mind. Let my child's life be put in jeopardy. I appreciate the wonderful work that this board does in sitting as a Board of Directors of the Public Health Department, and so I urge you to exercise your leadership in that direction. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, moving along. This brings us to item number two, which is the recognition of employees who have exemplified Pinal County's core culture values. Mr. Liu.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board and public. This is up as a reminder of the core culture that Pinal County employees created together to show and to follow the way we want to act and the way we want to be as we go about our business. And the last video, if you remember, we had a great example of teamwork between the Fleet Services Department and the PCSO Pinal County Sheriff's Office. Today, we have another great example. We have a Public Works Department who a couple, few employees have shown all the attributes of our core values here. Through being safety prepared and preparing for safety, they're able to take the accountability value and be prepared to work as a team to also exemplify the commitment value and go above and beyond the normal expectations of their daily jobs. So we have a video to honor them and some awards to celebrate their exemplary service.
Okay. You going to call them up?
We're going to cue the video, Chairman.
Oh, video. Don't want any dead time.
When you set those in, those ends right here will be open, all right?
Yeah, they'll be open. So today, we're out on Oroville Road and Diffin Road. We are here for a pre-construction meeting.
If we have a job going on, we'd like to get out in the field and kind of get touch base where they get our hands on with it because that way we can report back to our supervisors, letting them know what kind of work we're doing.
We were out there on a job, and we had the road shut down. We had everybody out there. We had our project manager, Kenny White, was out there.
Houser's a bigger speed road than this one, though, right?
So he's out there making sure it gets finished up properly. I had my supervisor, Mike Campbell, out there.
We tried to bring him back up to the native grade.
Just making sure everything's going smooth. And so myself and the crew were out there with the road shut down, and we're making this happen.
Kenny was given a job that one of my crews was tasked to handle. It was a safety-sensitive project where we went out and put up LED flashing signs along with some raised pavement markers, some RPMs down on Papago Road.
One of the crewmen, Logan Davis, noticed that there were some citizens in their trailer was on fire just right off to the side.
The back of the trailer was full of palm fronds and grass clippings and just pretty much dry desert matter. Our biggest concern was the gas cans that were on the back of the trailer. They were, they didn't really seem to be too worried about that, but, you know, definitely fire and gas, they're not mixed.
Things could always escalate a lot more, especially when there was two five-gallon gas cans on their trailer.
We're stuck because we're running a torch, and we got to get this done so we can get out of the roadway. Kenny and Mike, they jump over there, they end up pulling a fire extinguisher out of one of our trucks, and they run over there, and they help these guys who are trying to put this trailer full of brush out on fire with a bottle of water.
The landscapers were pretty much using up all the water that they had that was on the trailer, so they were emptying their water bottles out and their, you know, coolers out, and we came over with the fire extinguisher. It put, honestly, the majority of the fire out, so it was definitely nice that we had one in the truck.
You know, nobody's telling them they need to do this. They could have turned a blind eye to it and let it go. They just wanted to help out.
We had a couple firefighter hats put on our desk in the recent weeks.
We've got a few chuckles out of it.
That's the thing about the county, we have a good sense of humor, and everyone laughs about it. You come back to your office, you have a fire extinguisher hat on your desk, it's kind of something to laugh about and get the day going.
As many times where I see people stranded on the side of the road, you know, on work, out of work, it's always nice to be able to stop and lend a helping hand.
That's the way the county is. That's what we strive to do here. I think everybody here would do the same because if that was our family, we'd want somebody to help them out.
So thank you, Kenny and Mike, and we do have a couple tokens of appreciation for you if you want to come up and if you want to say a few words, feel free to. And it looks like if you have any family members here, too, to celebrate, I think they can come up and take a picture as well.
Yes. You got to come up to get the award. Good job, guys.
Look right here. Three, two, more. One, two, three. And the smile is infectious. One, two, three.
Shannon is right here, so we don't have to. See, I don't know if you just make sure.
Do you still want to read it or not? No, if she's not here. All right. Well, thank you, guys. We do appreciate you, you know, helping out folks on the side of the road. That's a, that's a great thing. So anyway. Moving along, that brings us to item number three, which is the County Manager's Report. Mr. Liu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to mention that this week, actually today, tomorrow, and Friday, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns is holding their annual conference. They got some really good sessions, and I know probably you, Chairman, and Supervisor Sertie have attended this before, maybe some of the other supervisors. But they, of course, are, we're partnering with them all the time. They're dealing with all of the same challenges, whether it's water, economic development, infrastructure, industries of the future, homelessness, housing diversity, all of those things that we're dealing with and partnering with them on. So next year, we'll try to make sure to coordinate and clear our calendars and get us, and for everybody else that wants to participate in that conference, get us registered and be able to attend that. We weren't quite prepared this year, but we'll make sure to do that next year.
Okay. And I'll echo that. That is a great opportunity to network with some of the council members from the communities that are in our districts and an opportunity to have some good conversations and hear what their issues are and how we can help as a government agency as well. So, good idea. Thank you, Leo. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I've attended those. I'm actually going to try to sneak in tomorrow. But, yeah, the word lobbying sometimes gets a bad connotation, but in this case, they're also, during the year, they lobby for all of our communities. So they go to bat for us because they know the situation and the things that they're up against, and they really do a good job of representing your hometown.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Very good. Let's see here. Brings us to, I think we're on purchasing division report. Ms. McBride. Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Shawna McBride, your purchasing manager for Pinal County, and today I have your purchasing division report for September 1st, 2021. So first up today, the board is requested to approve the following new contract awards. We recommend Rebecca Strand RN be awarded a contract for public health clinic services running October 11th, 2021 through October 10th, 2022, with four optional one-year extensions. This contract will be used by public health. Next, we recommend contracts be awarded to the following suppliers for commercial refuse, collection, and recycling services, right-of-way disposal, Waste Management of Arizona, and Republic Services. This contract is used countywide. Next, the board is requested to approve the following contract amendments. We recommend approval of Amendment 4 to secure its technologies for negotiated changes to pricing and scope of work to add the video relay services for inmates with hearing disabilities. This contract is used by the Pinal County Sheriff's Office. Next, the board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases that have been made with a value between $100,000 and $250,000. Purchase order 245992 in the amount of $106,170.12 to SHI International. This is for Reports Now software requested by ITMAS. Purchase order 245977 in the amount of $125,000 issued to Clifton Larson Allen LLP for consulting services requested by the Finance Department. And purchase order 245994 in the amount of $112,575.60 issued to Santana Ford for police responder vehicles requested by Fleet and PCSO. Next, we are requesting that the board approve the following cooperative purchases. We have requisition 162641 in the amount of $531,764 to Pictometry International Corporation for imagery software requested by the Assessor's Office. And last, the board is requested to approve the following change orders per Pinal County Procurement Code, Section PC 1502, governing change orders that exceed minimum thresholds. Purchase order 242743, sorry, 743. The change amount is $559,744.33 for a total purchase order amount of $19,710,796.14 to FCI Constructors for County Attorney Building Change Order 3 requested by Facilities. And purchase order 242657, the change amount of $25,570 for a total purchase order amount of $242,915 to Ryder Levitt Bucknell for Construction Management Services for the County Attorney Building Change Order 2 requested by our Facilities Department. And that is your purchasing division report for September 1st, 2021.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Kavanoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question on requisition 162641, the pictometry. And so that's not a competitive bid, is that correct?
That's correct. We utilized a GSA contract.
Okay. And are you aware of any competitors available to provide a similar service?
I am not. I know that we looked at GSA before. We had actually worked with this supplier previously, and I think that the budget was not approved for last year, so they had previously kind of worked with the supplier regarding this software, so.
Okay. And so I think the rest of my questions might be for... The assessor, Mr. Wolf.
Assistant Mr. Wolf.
Members of the board, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Wolf. So this, tell us what this pictometry does generally.
Well, it automates the process of getting three, well, sort of 3D images of all the buildings in the area that we survey. When we originally looked at this in 2017, one of the questions was, why don't we just use Google Earth? And the reason you can't use Google Earth is because you can't get the side views of the buildings that we can get with this technology. And that's why the other counties in Arizona, Maricopa, Yuma, and several others started using this, and we were kind of a late adopter, actually. They were ahead of us on that. And so now what has changed, one of the main things has changed, is it used to be the state law was we had to go visit all the new construction in order to put it on to the tax roll. And through the use of this technology, we can actually measure the buildings from the imagery, which allows us to go ahead and add it to the tax roll without sending a person out to the field, which is nice. It hasn't been changed in law, but the court decisions and regulations by the DOR have started to allow us to do this, which helps us a great deal, particularly right now when there's so many new buildings coming on the scene. And as it got used, we actually asked the vendor to go ahead and start adding it to law enforcement for 9/11 calls, for flood control, for all kinds of other services. So even though this comes through my office as the original requester, it comes out of the general fund, it's not, doesn't come out of the assessor's budget. It's something that is used by Public Works and everyone else in the county for all kinds of things now, as it turns out. The other thing we're trying to do, and we've been trying for four years, is get the cities like Apache Junction and Eloy and Coolidge, they all want access to these images for their, their planning purposes and so forth. And we've, I started out with Greg Stanley trying to work out an IGA, and we just never really got it done, so. So I would ask this board to, and county manager, to, you know, kind of make that a point of interest so that we can get that done with the other entities in the county. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, did I answer what you needed to hear?
Yes. So we haven't used this before?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We started in 2017. We did our first flyover.
Okay.
And we did only about two-thirds of what we're doing in this flyover. Your area, your district, actually, was not included in the first flyover, and Mr. Reals was not too happy about that at the time, but it was a matter of cost. We thought it prudent, because we find the emergency services using this technology so much, that the copper corridor should also be included in the next flyover, and that explains why the cost to do the flyover costs more this time around, because we're included in a bigger area. So it has been well-used every day in the last four years.
So in 2017, I asked Mr. Ellen Wood, and you may not have the exact answer, how much money has the county collected in tax revenues that we would not have otherwise collected if not for the pictometry?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, there's no way to quantify that, and because the way to tell will be after we do this flyover, we'll be able to do the images side by side and see what we've missed as pickups from 2017 to this new flyover. So that's the idea. Normally, we would have done it two years ago, and I probably would have an answer for you that I could quantify in black and white. But without a second flyover, we have no way to measure set A of data versus set B of data.
And does the software for the pictometry do an automatic comparison to find buildings that have been erected between the first flight and the second flight?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, absolutely yes. It's very, it's an amazing technology, and we're very excited, and we're looking forward to having those images in our, probably next spring, if we, go ahead.
Do we have a lifetime license for the pictures, or do we lease those, where we have to pay again for the pictures after a given period of time?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, what works, what happens is, they give us the set of data for this flyover, and then we have a nominal, it's less than 10,000 a year, access to it, and actually, they haven't been charging us for the last three years because of COVID. But we own it for a lifetime, to answer your question directly. The, would we do another flyover in the future, maybe four or five years again, somewhere down the road, maybe a different assessor will look at that differently if I'm not here, but that'll be up to the county at that time.
Thank you. And finally, how many dollars in assessed value would we have to capture to realize a one-to-one payback of the $531,000? I have estimated it, but I thought maybe you'd have that number.
I don't have, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, I don't have that on the tip of my tongue, but I'll be glad to get staff to supply that.
Okay. My guess was about $95 million in assessed value, in cash value, about $14 million.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Supervisor, this, we are government, and not everything we do can be captured as a return on investment in terms of dollars and cents. This is a service that everybody's using, so to quantify how much Public Works gets out of it, or the 9/11 people at the Sheriff's Office, or the other community development and so on, is, it's an intangible that we can't really put a number on. I brought it forth because I thought it'd be a good thing for the county, and that's why it comes out of the general fund budget, not the assessor's budget.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Mr. Wolf, just, if I can just ask one more question, and it's more of a clarification. If I remember right, it was, it's like a two-year schedule that they like to do these flyovers, was that correct? It was kind of a space so that you could definitely see, and then, reason we didn't do the copper corridor, so we kind of focused on the higher densities to start with. Does that sound right?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. Depending on your county growth and the location of the growth and so on, determines how often you do the flyovers. We would have liked to have done it last year, but with COVID and everybody concerned about budget spending, we deferred it until this budget cycle, so you're correct. It just, sort of, it depends on the county itself.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. So, Mr. Wolf, you said in there that state law required that you go out and touch every building and do all that, so does this technology allow you to not need as many appraisers to go out and touch, like, say, homes? Can you measure a home site with this, or is that still necessary?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor McClure, what is changing is, it hasn't been, hasn't been put in the state ledge yet, but it's on the DOR guidelines, is that they're accepting aerial photography across the country, because we can measure a building from the images, which we couldn't obviously do. So with the plethora of buildings, we are using that instead of sending someone out every time there's a new, particular subdivisions with standard design homes. Yeah, really, you know, we can say, yes, it's the same as every 50 other ones that we measured in that subdivision. And the reason it's important is, in case someone were to challenge their valuation, the law was put in place so that, you know, the assessor's office would be out there and say, yes, we actually visited physically. That's way back when, when they put it in the law. But as the technology evolves, it's not becoming as necessary, and that's why we haven't asked for, actually, for more appraisers, is because we can, we can use technology instead of more people on the road. That's great. Thank you.
Did you have something?
I do, I just, I want to ask a question or something along the lines of what you mentioned earlier in regard, and you're going to do some research on some stuff I heard, correct?
Sure.
Would you include in that the other departments that are actually using this as well, and maybe even have them talk a little bit about the impact that it's had on them, the benefits or the disadvantages of having it?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, I can certainly request that the Sheriff's Office and Public Works and whoever else is using it can give a report to the board, but that's not my purview. That would be the county manager's.
Just suggest that we can, we can give that task to the county manager, and he can get back to us on that.
Okay, thank you.
See how widely used it is. All right. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one final question. So the permits themselves, when we issue a certificate of occupancy, that isn't sufficient for the assessor's office. You have to either go out and measure or measure using some technology, is that correct?
In order to put on new construction on the tax roll, Supervisor Kavanaugh, Mr. Chairman, yes, we are, we have been directed up to this point in time to physically visit it.
Okay, is it the law, though?
It is the law.
It's statute, if I remember right.
Yeah. It's fairness for the taxpayer, basically, which we want.
Okay. Anything else? Well, thank you, Mr. Wolf.
It's always a pleasure to see you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Have a busy morning.
Thank you. Back to the agenda item, which is the purchasing agreement. Any other questions on the presentation? Hearing and seeing none? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchasing division report dated September 1st, 2021.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I move to amend the motion.
Okay, so you're asking for a friendly amendment?
To exclude the pictometry, I'm trying to turn to the page, from the purchasing, so we can have more time to examine the benefits.
Okay, we have a friendly amendment. Do we have a second for that amendment?
Can I have an explanation on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, ruling?
Sure. Go ahead.
So, so the question is, is there, is there another technology that we can use? Google Earth does sell higher technology. I don't think you could measure a house with it. The, the $531,000 would, as I said previously, would need to, would need to find unassessed or items built without a permit in the amount of $95 million. We don't know what the benefits are, as Mr. Goodman said previously, to the other agencies, and if so, I certainly would like to hear from them. Mr. Wolf and I have had discussions in the past on pictometry, and I question the value of it. So I think a fuller explanation might be in order, and time is not of the essence, so if we waited a week or two, it wouldn't hurt on this item.
I want some clarification, county attorney and purchasing. This, has this been paid, or is being approved to be paid?
That's correct. Yep. And they, what they indicated to me was that they needed to have a signed agreement in hand by September 3rd. Sir Wolf isn't here, I think it was September 3rd, but, you know, obviously, we can work with them, I'm sure, on that.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it was a bill that we were asking to be paid.
Yeah, it has not been paid. This is for approval of the requisition. If you didn't approve it today, we would hold that.
Supervisor, I wanted to ask Supervisor Surti, did you get your answer? Or you need more explanation?
I, I think so, yeah. So that, I mean, we've gone this long without it before, so another few weeks shouldn't matter.
Okay. We're using it, we're just not, this is for the upgrade, is what we're purchasing.
Yeah. They have access to some, some features now, which
They have new features.
Technically, they normally would have cut us off last year when we didn't move forward with it as we had planned, but I know right now they're starting accessing some of the technology.
Okay. Supervisor Goodman?
So, just so that, very clear on this, I've already done my homework on this. So I already know the background and the other departments and things of that nature. I think this was more of what I, what I was requesting was to accommodate some of the things and the concerns that you would have, and so that it would come forth, but I've already done my homework on this one. So I'm good to go and move forward with this. However, because of your, for you to feel at ease with this, I'm willing to even second that if necessary.
Well, okay. Do I have a second on the amendment? Okay, Supervisor, Surti has seconded the friendly amendment to the, to the action, which is to, and help me out, to remove
Mr. Chairman, to postpone the decision on the, that item until the next meeting, because we don't have one next week.
And that meeting date is going to be September the 29th, is the next regular board meeting.
To September 29th.
Mr. Chairman, should I restate my motion?
I'll ask the clerk.
Yes, Chairman, if Supervisor Kavanaugh can include that actual date in the motion.
Okay.
So, my motion is to continue the, to remove this pictometry item from the purchase report agenda and hear it on 9/29/21.
Okay, and we had a second from Supervisor.
Re-second that, yes.
Surti? So we're going to vote on the amendment first. All in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, 4-1. Now back to the original item, the purchasing division report by Ms. McBride. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the balance of the report with the exclusion of the pictometry.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if there's any other information that you need from me, please let me know. Be happy to provide it.
Will do, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Brings us to item number five on the consent agenda, is the consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. We've still not seen Mrs. Roberts.
No, Chairman, I still do not see one here in reference to the diaper proclamation.
The diaper proclamation? Anybody here representing that? Okay. So, it's a proclamation that is in our agenda. We were going to pull it if somebody was here to accept it, but not seeing anybody. I will not pull that. Does anybody on the board want anything pulled?
I would like item number B, Mr. Chair.
Number what?
B.
B.
Mr. Chairman, I would like C, I'm sorry, that was the diaper one, Y, and O.
And Y. All right. Due to time constraints, I'm going to take prerogative as chair, and I don't want to motion on the consent items yet. I'm going to move to item number, I believe it's six, so we can go in to an exec session. We have somebody that's participating in that exec session that has a tight schedule, so I'm going to move forward and go to the exec session. If I can have a motion to go into exec session first?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we go into executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I just have it. We're going into exec session, and then we'll come back and take on the consent items. Beg of your indulgence to participate in this meeting. We'd appreciate it. Thank you, everybody, for allowing me to move that agenda around. Somebody participated in that meeting that has a tight schedule, so. If I remember right, we're back to a, I need a motion on the consent agenda, and we have removed B, O, and Y, if I remember right.
Yes, sir.
Sound right? Gentlemen? Was there anybody from the public that wanted anything removed? Oh, we got to adjourn the exec session, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to adjourn the exec session?
So ordered.
You mean a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Thank you. Okay. We're out of exec session. We're back in to the board of supervisors meeting. So anyway, back to the consent items. The three items removed.
Mr. Chair, I'd like
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent items A through Z minus B, O, and Z, Y. B, O, Y.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. I just have it. Thank you. Item B, Natasha. Is there something here?
Yeah.
Who pulled it?
I did.
You did?
I did.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to point out that this is one of my appointees for the TAC, the Transportation Advisory Committee. I spoke with Shelby, quite at length. She's a resident there in Santan Valley. She works for Queen Creek, actually works in their Public Works Department, and she's actually worked for the county in our Public Works for years, and so I appreciate her taking this assignment, as always, with a lot of our volunteers from the county that live here, and their input is very viable and very helpful, and so I appreciate her. And so, with that, I just wanted to recognize Shelby and her decision to step in and help us out.
Very good.
So, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve item number B as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I just have it. Thank you. Takes us to item O. Supervisor Kavanaugh?
I just noticed that on this one, the, I believe the, I thought I had the copies of it, but the proclamation was on the 15th, and we're approving the proclamation as of the 16th. Does that need to be corrected?
Do I have a, somebody from legal that can?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Kavanaugh, Kevin Costello with County Attorney's Office. Yes, that will need to be corrected. That was something that changed while we were in the process. The Weather Service made a different designation as to the official start time of this particular weather event. They notified emergency as to the official start time of this particular weather event. They notified emergency management. So we got that changed apparently, but not in every place it needs to be. So the 16th will need to be corrected to the 15th.
August 16th instead of August 15th.
15th instead of the 16th, because it's the 15th in the, yes, in the actual resolution.
It is the 15th.
Yeah, so.
Are you good with that?
Yes, I don't know.
Where was it, the 16th? Written down as the 16th?
I think, did your proclamation come out on the 16th?
Oh.
It's in the attached document.
It was between when the proclamation was issued and we got this in front of the board, then the Weather Service, you know, changed the date that they officially considered the weather event to have started on and that. So, emergency management notified us, oh no, it's actually the 15th. We got that corrected here, but not.
Okay.
So it's the weatherman's fault, that's.
I guess he can just change the weather like that.
So Mr. Costello and Mr. Chairman, we can approve this as presented then?
Okay.
Is that correct?
That's the way I understand it, yes. Because the proclamation is correct. Okay. So, do I have a motion on item O?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item O as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, say nay. I just have it, thank you. Brings us to Y. Mr. Kavonoff, I believe you pulled this?
Yes. So this, Mr. Chairman, is discussion approval/disapproval of an intergovernmental agreement with Pinnell County Schools and the Arizona Association of County Schools. And I believe the presenter is- Bissard?
Yeah, Jill, Jill's here.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good most afternoon, how are you gentlemen?
Good.
Fine, thanks.
Thank you.
What can I answer for you on this?
Well, thank you. So this is an association, and how does it benefit Pinnell County?
So, the county school superintendents have formed an organization, AACSS, and it, through that, we have services that we work together with coordinating services for our districts, which helps save them money. Also provide services that maybe they would have to go find elsewhere, so it's in-house. But we also, as an organization, employ a lobbyist to help pass any legislation or possibly fight any legislation that would, that affect our schools. And we have memberships to other organizations through this. So as a whole, representing the 15 counties, AACSS, we can get a discounted rate of membership for all of our county school offices to a couple of organizations, Arizona Rural Schools Association and a national organization, Arizona, sorry, Association of Education Service Agencies. So there are several districts that don't take this to their Board of Supervisors for approval, and they just become part of it. The overwhelming consensus, the consensus with the group is that we need to, because you are the governing body of our county, and we are an entity within the county, that we just put it on the agenda for approval. It's, this is the second renewal. There's been two other 10-year IGAs that have just solidified this.
And Mr. Chairman and Ms. Bissard, how much does Pinnell County typically have to pay each year? Is there a dues schedule?
We do have a dues, and Tanya, I think it is 2,500. We meet quarterly, and that also helps pay for those meetings.
And based on the agreement, the association, as my understanding, may change the dues at any amount, any time during the 10 years. The amount of the dues is not specified in the agreement?
Yeah, if, so it's usually a discussion and a vote within the 15 counties during that AACSS meeting in our August. But I don't think they've increased, you know. I think it's been consistent. Possibly there may have been an increase prior to me coming into office when they first started to employ the lobbyist.
Okay. And I read the contract, and it says that the association offers financial reports to the reasonable satisfaction of county Board of Supervisors. Have you had a financial report? Do you possess it? Have you seen it?
Oh yeah, it's just, you know, our bank statements basically, and there's nothing else that comes out other than the cost of that lobbyist and our meetings, and then the memberships to those two organizations. Everything else stays in.
It's primarily a lobbyist function.
What's that?
It's this primary, this is to lobby.
Yeah, mhm.
Okay.
And we do have a legislative committee that works with the lobbyist, and it's usually the executive. By the way, that cost is not a cost that comes out of the Board of Supervisors for the membership, out of the Board of Supervisors' pocket. That comes from our general school funds account.
Okay.
Okay. It's an association that all the school superintendents participating, like the league would be the city councils, CSA would be county supervisors, yes, we have an association.
That's all, yep. Thank you Chairman Miller and members.
Any other questions or comments?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Do you know if this set of lobbyists or this association, because their lobbyist is managed in part by Tammy Ryle?
It is not. It is the Aaron's Group.
Okay, that's a private contractor.
Barry Aaron's.
Law firm.
Mhm. We also utilize ACO and their lobbyists. They are involved in nearly all of our discussions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any questions or comments? Board's pleasure?
I have a comment.
Okay.
So I'm not comfortable binding other Board of Supervisors beyond four years for any contract, if possible. So, and then I think this is primarily a lobbying group, and we have lobbyists for the county. And I just don't think this is a wise expenditure. So, that's my thoughts on this.
All right, Board's pleasure?
I've seen it work as a school board member, and I think it's a worthwhile expenditure. And I move that we approve item Y, the IGA between, with Pinnell County and the Arizona Association of County School Superintendents.
And I would move that we amend that motion.
Okay, slow down. I have a motion. I almost had a second.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we amend that, Mr. McClure's motion to the final term of our four years in office.
Okay, we have a friendly amendment to limit it to only four years. Is there a second to that amendment? Hearing none, fails through lack of a second. Moves this on back to the original motion to accept item Y as presented.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
4-1. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bissard. We did the exec session, okay. So I'm going to recess the Board of Supervisors' meeting and open up the Public Health Services Board. All we have is consent items. So all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Anybody have anything they want pulled from the Public Health Services District?
Mr. Chairman, item B.
Item B?
Bravo.
County manager, only one other item. Anyway, okay. Seeing no others, Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent items A through B minus B as presented.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. I just have it. And so item B, Ms. Spears and Leo. Mr. Kavonoff, your questions?
Good morning, thank you. So Mr. Chairman, we sent a few questions over to Dr. Spears concerning this. The, as you heard from the comments from the public, this is a grant award for three, I have my glasses on here, $3,387,435, and in the summary, number five, COVID-19 vaccination equity funding. And so this requires that we create a public health nurse position to be fully funded by the contract award. So, so to start, Ms. Spears, what portion of the Health Department's budget is from grants? Do you get that question answered?
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, Supervisors, Tasha Spears, Public Health. I'm sorry, I don't have the answer to that specific question right at the current time. I do have the answers to the questions I was submitted, so my apologies.
No, that's all right. Could you go ahead and review the questions that we sent you? It might make it faster than the question answer.
So the question that I was submitted was in reference to the need for a health equity official or position with respect to this particular grant. So interestingly enough, we did ask the same question when we saw the criteria for application for the $3 million. What we were informed is that this position is required in order to receive the $3 million. And we had anticipated filling that position with a public health nurse, specifically because the position was designated to serve underserved communities with respect to access to resources, access to COVID vaccines. So we anticipated that we could fill that position with a public health nurse who could also offer service delivery. The position specifically is required to obtain these funds. It was not something that we added just kind of surreptitiously. So the $3 million is for Pinnell County communities to be able to access the funds just by virtue of location. In Pinnell County, there are some communities who are underserved, who don't have access to COVID-19 vaccines. So this is specifically to facilitate that so that communities everywhere truly do have a choice about whether they would like to receive the vaccine or not.
So you said there are communities that are underserved, and you're talking about demographic populations, not cities, is that correct?
Yes, so certain populations are described in the vaccine equity funding, populations such as the homeless populations, rural communities that may not have huge Walmarts or Sam's Clubs or access to maybe as many resources as some other areas do. So with regard to this funding source, again, with regard to underserved populations, they are listed as populations such as rural populations, homeless, even incarcerated populations. So there are a number of populations that would be served.
Okay, the, under the notice of funding opportunity, the target populations, it says it relates specifically to populations that have been placed at higher risk and are underserved, which depending on the needs and priorities of the applicant, may include African-American, Latino, indigenous, Native people, Asian-Americans, Pacific Islanders, other people of color, members of religious minorities, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ people, people with disabilities, and people who live in rural communities over the age of 65 and otherwise adversely affected by persistent poverty or inequality. So I read that really fast, I know, but did we identify that there was a problem before we sought the grant? Or did we see the grant and look for a problem? And then the questions I'm getting from my constituents are, you know, we have Walgreens, Walmart, everybody. Everybody knows that there are free vaccines, and did we identify people through a survey or man-on-street interviews to determine we actually had a problem?
So individually, we did not send out a survey. The funds are made available to counties that have been determined to have a social vulnerability index of a certain value as identified by census tracts that are, and the SBI, Social Vulnerability Index, is identified federally. And it's identified based on 15 factors that kind of fall into four different categories. So socioeconomic status, transportation availability, housing, and a number of other criteria. So we do have a social vulnerability index in this county that falls into the category that allows us to apply for this funding. What I can tell you from informal and not a survey analysis is we have had extreme ends of the continuum with regard to vaccine requests. You know, initially, we had people who called saying they were gonna shoot up public health clinics if they didn't get their vaccine that day, as opposed to, you know, the other extreme as well. With regard to the HHS announcement that all Americans would have availability of a booster, even though we have not had emergency use authorization for that, simply that announcement nationally resulted in us getting a flood of calls as well. So, you know, we're looking at obtaining these funds for the communities in Pinnell County to be able to offer them access if they so choose.
Okay, so I wanted to review, what specifically will this nurse position do in a nutshell? I know you kind of covered it, but I wanna make that clear.
Right, so we anticipated that our health equity coordinator, which was the requirement of the grant, would be fulfilled. It was our thought that that position would be fulfilled by a nurse, simply because that person would manage this grant, would be able to determine and respond to areas of need as we're getting called for those kinds of services for COVID vaccines, as well as we thought we would want somebody in that position who could also provide service delivery versus simply be a management or a coordinator position.
I thought that's what you said earlier, and I agree on that point. If this position were able to provide service delivery, I'd be more for it. But the rules say specifically that this person cannot provide service under, I think, OT 21, 2103, funds cannot be used for purchasing or providing vaccines. Recipients are advised to use other existing funds for these purposes. So there are some exclusions there, and so those are some of my concerns. I don't think I have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Do we have a mobile service that goes out and vaccinates, do we not? It seems like we passed something a few weeks ago or a month ago or something for that.
Yes, so that was the IGA that passed a couple of weeks ago, and so we are in the process. We work with procurement to ensure there's an RFP that goes out with regard to those services, and we anticipate allocating those funds for that service. We currently have, through an emergency procurement request in the past, we do have a subcontractor right now who, in a limited fashion, is responding to requests for COVID vaccines to different organizations who are wanting like a weekend, a pop-up vaccine event, and those kinds of requests.
So that would fulfill the equity in delivering vaccines, would that not? So that'd make this like just extra.
So this particular funding source would also contribute to the availability to offer vaccines. And again, we anticipate, based on the phone calls we're getting, if there is- And again, we anticipate, based on the phone calls we're getting, if there is and when there is probably emergency use authorization for booster shots, based on the, like I said, informal calls we're getting now, people asking to book for these shots, even though they have not yet been approved, we anticipate this need will be there and these funds will be utilized. This particular funding source actually extends up until June 30th, 2024. So, to ensure that we can respond to underserved areas, this, these funds will be available up through until 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question? You good with that?
I'm good. Mr. Chairman, I have one additional.
Okay.
Dr. Spears, this is a contract, and the, there's an agreement by reference, and the references to the website, has, has this contract been reviewed by our county attorney's office?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know who specifically reviewed? I didn't, I didn't see that in the documents. What, which attorney?
I believe it may have been Mr. Costello who reviewed it.
If Mr. Costello is here, maybe he can answer a quick question on that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. The agreement by reference lists the website specifically, healthpeople.gov, which is not an active website, and the...
I'm sorry, Supervisor.
And the, the contract incorporates, if you look around, you can find another website that's similar name, and I presume that's the correct one we did this morning. And so incorporates that website into the document, but is, are the terms that's referenced on the date of execution of the contract, or if the website changes, are we then bound to those new terms because the CDC or National Health Institute or whoever changed the term? So, that's my question.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I reviewed that and looked, as I read it, it was healthypeople.gov, and there, that is an existing website. It does exist. Certainly, it would be as of the date of the agreement. If they made subsequent changes, we're not, you haven't approved those changes, so it would be as the date you approved the agreement.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would have comments if no one has any more questions for Dr. Spears.
I see no other questions, go ahead.
So, the, the data that we found was that out of 425-odd thousand people in the county, according to the, I think that's the Arizona Health website, 320,288 have been vaccinating, leaving 104,000 unvaccinated. And so, there are 50 vax, at least 50 vaccine distribution locations in Pinell, according to azdhs.gov. And so, we had, we had someone during call to the public mention that, you know, we don't want to keep people from having vaccines, and this, this wouldn't, this wouldn't, this position would, would fund a nurse presumably at about 65,000, and the other several million would go to an as-yet unnamed contractor. And so, we don't know anything about the contractors, what the goals and purposes are, except for the vaccine equity. So, it's, I will make a motion, if we're ready for that, that we not approve item seven, this item, excuse me.
This would be item B.
Excuse me, item B on the public health agenda.
Okay, I'll take that as a motion. I have a motion to deny passing of item B on the consent agenda of the Public Health Services District.
Second.
Board of Director. Okay, so we have a motion to, to deny it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Do you want a roll call, or are you good?
No, but we can do one for the public so that they are aware.
Okay.
Of the actual vote. Supervisor Kavanaugh?
This would be a yea to reject item B.
Yes, the motion on the floor is going to be to disapprove consent agenda item B on the Public Health District Agenda.
The mine is a yea.
Supervisor McClure?
Yea.
Okay.
Supervisor Sertie? Vice Chairman Goodman?
No.
And Chairman Miller? That motion passes to disapprove consent agenda item B on the Public Health Service District, three to two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I adjourned the public health meeting and reconvene the board supervisors meeting. All right, page here. Item number eight is, has a public, a public hearing component to it, but we'll start with a presentation on a resolution, an SUP resolution. And so, Mr. Chow or Gilbert?
Chair, Vice Chair, Board, good morning. Gilbert O'Deen, Senior Planner, I'll be giving you the, or presenting to you the presentation this morning for the SUP 00621. So, for this case, special use permit request for retail sales of feed and tack for a hay barn in the general rural zoning district. The area in question is 2.5 acres in size, east side of North Ironwood Drive, south of East German Road, and within proximity to the town of Queen Creek. The owner applicant today is Nate LaSour, and he is here present for questions if you would like to ask. So, this is a map that gives you kind of perspective of where the property is at. As mentioned, it's just adjacent to Queen Creek, so it's north of Pinell County. This is, shows you the site in better perspective, but the red square there represents the property that we're talking about. It is, as I mentioned before, zoned GR, and it kind of gives you kind of perspective to what's out there, a lot of rural type zonies that are out there that are compatible. This is an area map that gives you better perspective, shows you the lots, they're all kind of similar in size, there are long, narrow lots that exist out there in this area. Another map that gives you more perspective, this is the aerial view of what, what we're talking about today in the area. Currently, the property is vacant. And this here gives you a good perspective of the site plan and what they're, what they're wanting to do. This structure doesn't have any restrooms on it, none like that. It's just going to be basically a structure kind of open. It's a hay barn that is going to be used to store hay and similar type products that are sold to, to the public. Here's a better, better view, closer up of the project in hand. So, it shows you the entryway, has a drive into the project, they have a gate. For those of you who may have seen this similar type business in play, it exists in the Gilbert, the town of Gilbert area, it's exactly the same type of idea they want to do here, where you've got the hay barn and you've got the area to store the hay. Shows you circulation of the site as they come in from, from the gate out the gravel drive, pull over to get their, their feed, hay, and then they, they pull out to another gate, and they now have a nice round circular area. They are providing employee parking, ADA as well. They do have landscaping that wraps around this area that's existing. They, as we get further into the site plan process, which is coming next, we get into more detail in regards to how much landscaping is needed to be appropriate for the area. We've had one letter of complaint, one letter of protest, there was concern from one owner and one owner only that I've, I'm aware of. And that was, that started at the very beginning when we went to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, that's the only one that's come out against this. Once again, this is kind of a rural type use, they're not bringing any major structures to the site with a lot of employees. These types of uses typically employ a couple of gentlemen to help load the hay to the customers that come in, pretty straightforward, pretty simple. So, the impact from, from planning standpoint is going to be minimal, and it's going to be, they have a service road that's on the front of the property that is going to help kind of buffer the amount of any stacking issues that could come play because there's another road that's next to it. So, that's very helpful. This gives you a better view, shows you the main arterial road that's off to the front here, and then this is the access road that they're going to use to access their property. So, this is an image of the property to the north, this is to the south, to the east, and this is to the west. Across the way there, that's the Queen Creek town limits. So, items for consideration, traffic impact will be minimal. This should complement the surrounding type rural uses in the area. Staff will note that the traffic engineer at the time had commented that a traffic impact analysis probably would not be necessary due to the low amount of traffic, traffic impact that this is going to create. So, once again, a commercial type use that this area is, is going to be minimal in regards to the impact. Applicant has talked about the landscaping and what we're going to do to help with the visual impact around the area, and as mentioned, one letter of opposition. Staff recommends approval. We had a 5-0 vote of a recommendation for approval from the P&amp;Z. They have 12 stipulations, which they're aware of, and they have read. So, if you have questions for them, they're here. If you have questions for me, I'm here.
Okay, I don't, anybody have any questions for Gilbert?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And it may be for the applicant as well. The, there is a requirement that, in the agreement, I think there was a requirement that we have landscaping?
Yes, sir.
And if I looked at it correctly, it's a, it's a dirt parking lot that's surrounded by a fence, and so the rest of the property is, is fenced off and it's tillable, or maybe it's fallow, I don't know. So, so is it reasonable to request that the applicant install greenery there when it's just a parking lot, and perhaps the applicant would have commentary on that?
Sure. Would you like staff to answer that?
Go ahead, yeah.
Thank you. Great question. With all commercial applications that we get, landscaping is a requirement per code. Staff does have some, some flexibility on that in regards to the real nature, if it's a, if it's a Walmart. In this case, the applicant already has some existing landscaping that surrounds the area, and that may be sufficient for what the code requires. Now, a lot of times we get applicants, customers, people that live within the area that just are dumbfounded by how this is going to impact the area, so we work with the applicants to try to beef up the amount of landscaping around the area to, to buffer the view. In this case, I haven't had a lot of, or any complaints besides the one. So, what he has there may be already good enough, but the code does require it, so we will look at that. But I, I'm not, I'm not here to reinvent the wheel in regards to this, it's a simple use, the neighbors seem to be okay with it. So, if they, what they have, I think there's some, some pine trees and natives here to give you better details. What is there today may be enough, because he does have, I believe, around the entire area already growing today, they have trees and some strawberries, so, so we'll see. But I can have the applicant also address you that, if you'd like.
And the second question is about a traffic, so you said it would not likely be required? So, I know those are kind of expensive, and this is a very low-volume business, can, would it be wise to just eliminate that? It seems to be up in the air as to whether it is or is not necessary, and this is not an area I'm familiar with, so could you educate me on that?
Yeah, so that decision is done by our traffic engineer, and there was some comments that came forward that it is an email, so it's proven that there's comments that came from the, the traffic engineer, the counties that was saying that they were going to require a traffic impact analysis. So, I had asked them at the next level, which is a site plan, that's when we would get into it's need or not. So, if they have those comments from our engineer, then they would use it to move forward and probably would not render the, the need for a traffic impact. But that's done by the engineer, not by planning staff.
Not your department. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
No, sir. Any other questions? Supervisor Goodman?
I do. Can, Gilbert, can you, I know this, it seems to me like this particular project's been on, in the process for some time now. Am I mistaken on that? I think it would, the applicant, and maybe it can, this is something that I got to ask the applicant to give some feedback on, on the process here, so that it will help us better on our planning department. But from, do you remember when this was originally came to us?
As far as I remember, this case has not been sitting around for very long at all.
Okay.
When they came in, they had, as a matter of fact, they just submitted, it was about a week ago, the pre-app meeting required for the site plan, and we had already discussed that we were going to try to get them done in six months.
Okay.
To get an SUP public hearing and then a site plan done within six months, with the amount of volume we have today is, is pretty quick. But I had already negotiated that with them early on and said, you know what, this is a simple case, let's get you going. So, there hasn't been a ton of delay on this one. Probably the thing that's held us back is the amount of volume of work that we have today due to the market.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Any questions for the applicant that are here and are available for?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Supervisors. I am Nate Lasweare, and I'm grateful for this opportunity. It's been a good learning experience for me, and the staff has been very helpful. I've been working with Gilbert through this process, so.
I don't propose to be a farmer, but I do have a question. What's the difference between a hay barn and a hay storage? Because I usually store hay under the barn.
We just kind of identified the hay barn as where we're selling the hay from, and then the clients probably won't be going into that hay storage area.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant at this time?
I just have a comment.
Okay.
Being a merchant myself, if you do have to do some landscaping, look at it as, I mean, you're going to try to catch people on Ironwood, they'll see that something's going on over there if they see some nice stuff going in, it'll look, because they see it every day and they'll be immune to it, but when you see something's different there, you can use it as advertising.
That's a good suggestion. Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anybody from the public want to comment on this project? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2021 dash SUP 006 dash 21. Nate Lasweare, the owner applicant requesting approval of a special use permit for retail sales of feed and/or tack at hay barn on an approximately two-and-a-half acre parcel in general rural. There is, the Planning Commission voted unanimously seven to zero to recommend approval of this particular case with 12 stipulations.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Nice habit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, brings us to item number nine. It has a public hearing component as well. So, this is a decision approval or disapproval of a program for the year 2020 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Ms. Patel.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board, Heather Patel with Finance. This item here is a required annual report that we are to submit to HUD to let them know what we did the previous year for our CDBG and our home programs. So, this is actually going to cover the activities that we completed in July of '20 to June 30th of '21. And the amount spent, this actually did change a little bit to 1,618,000. It was just crossing over the fiscal year, there was some extra expenditures, so that, that changed, but otherwise, everything else in this presentation would remain the same. So, the two funding periods that are going to be covered under this report are our fiscal year '19 funding and our fiscal year '20. So, under our fiscal year '19, the only funding So under our fiscal year '19, the only funding we received at that time were CDBG funds. And we completed our waterline project, which was here within the Florence area, and we benefited 270 people within the immediate service area. We also had an owner-occupied housing rehab program, but no project was complete. We do have one project that was under contract. And then we are in the process, our Colonial del Sol Sewer Design and Engineering Project. That was a late add-on to the program, so we are just doing the design and engineering right now. Also, under the fiscal year 2019 was the addition of our first round of the coronavirus funding. That was allocated strictly to providing rental assistance through our housing authority and providing funding to our local nonprofits. So as a result, we provided rental assistance to 203 households, and we served over 59,000 people through our nonprofit programs. A lot of that is through the food services that we provided to different food banks. We also had some community projects that currently we have subrecipient agreements that were just signed back in June for those communities, and so we anticipate projects occurring within this current year. Then, under our fiscal year '20 funding, we had set aside money for park improvements in San Manuel and in Dudleyville. We actually just signed a contract with a contractor for that, and so that project is moving forward. So there was really nothing to report in the last program year. We also have our Hopi Hills Waterline Project. That project, we're finishing up some design on that, and then we hope to do the construction in coming year. We also had some additional community projects. Now, when I say community projects, I specifically mean the participating communities that have agreements with us to be a part of our program. We just signed their subrecipient agreements back in June, so those we anticipate seeing some activity coming very soon. And then finally, in '20, we had our home program. That, we did not have any finalized housing rehab projects under that program completed last year, but we do have several that are in line to be completed very soon. And then we have our housing development projects. Right now, we have an RFP that's going out on the street, and then from that, we will get proposed projects, and that's what we will use to determine what housing development project we will complete. And that is essentially what's in our report to HUD. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. There's one project in the works that I heard of. Are you aware if this is the project in Randolph? Or not? Or maybe it would?
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that one is not under this program year.
Okay. Is it under a different program area?
It would be, possibly, and it depends on the funding source we choose. So it has not been determined that CDBG would be the funding source that we're going to use at this time.
Okay. And then this may or may not be a question for you. Under the section for minority business enterprises and women business enterprises helped, I was disappointed to see that no women or Hispanic businesses were aided in this report. And do you have some input on that, explanation, thoughts?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. Supervisor Kavanaugh. Because technically, the Florence Waterline Project was the one and only project that was really completed during that program year, that's the only one that we have to go off of. None of the funding towards our nonprofits would be applicable because those aren't contracted projects. So I would anticipate in future years that that number change. It's just one project, so. But we do have, in when we put these projects out to bid, we do list that we have encouraged those types of businesses to apply. We also are required to look on a website that HUD has that would list some of those businesses, so we can specifically reach out to them and encourage them to apply. So, yeah, we are looking at options of possibly providing extra points when scoring projects, but that isn't anything definite at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Good?
Good.
Okay. Any other questions from Heather? Okay. This has a public hearing component. I'll open up the floor for public comment at this time, public hearing. No comments? Hmm. Public hearing's closed.
Thank you.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Program Year 2020 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Nice to have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Brings us to item number 10. Discussion approval or disapproval of our vision, Section 8, administrating plan. Who do we have? Alonda?
Yes. Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning. How are you?
Good on yourself. Alonda Seefus, Housing Director.
Okay. You have a presentation, or do you have some general information about what we're approving here?
So we were asked to have the attorneys take a look at it, and the attorneys did review our plan.
Oh, okay. All right.
Specifically to items that were brought to attention regarding immigration status and criminal background information.
Okay. Yeah, is this one, it was continued? I'm sorry, I didn't pick up on that.
Yes.
And is it, is Colleen here to?
Yes, she's here.
Did you receive specific questions that you can refer to, or where are we at on this?
Mr. Chairman, what I did was listen to the comments made at the last meeting.
Okay.
And reread through the administrative plan and brought the applicable regulations in case there are additional questions. So if you'd like, I could start with the questions that were asked at the last meeting.
I think that would be a good place to start. Thank you.
Okay. I'll take off my mask. I should back up and introduce myself, Colleen Connor with the Pinell County Attorney's Office. One of the questions was regarding the criminal history, and the question Supervisor Kavanaugh presented was, in the application process for a participant, the criminal history record is sought, and there was a question of why the landlord is not provided the criminal history. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I hope I characterized that accurately. So that is in fact true. During the eligibility process before there is even a landlord involved, there is a background check among, you know, including many other parts of the eligibility process. But under the Privacy Act 5 U.S.C., Section 552A, there are restrictions on the use and disclosure of criminal records. And violating those restrictions could lead to civil or criminal penalties. So therefore, those records are not disclosed unless and until there is some judicial process by which a landlord would need those records, such as an eviction.
So just for my clarification, that the landlord would have to go to court and request that information? Is that what?
Actually, oh. Go ahead.
Yeah, sure.
So what happens with the Section 8 program? When we initially run a criminal background screening, we look for the criteria that would either qualify them for the Section 8 program or disqualify them for the Section 8 program. For instance, anyone required to register as a lifetime sex offender or manufacturing methamphetamines, they will be ineligible for the program. And that's, there's no timeframe on that. That's just zero.
That pops up, they're out.
Correct. And then there's some leniency that the housing authority has granted in regards to how long of a criminal history we look at. In our plan, we did look at three years, anything past three years. Depending on what that crime is, they could be denied. But for the most part, because we do partner with local service providers and agencies that, you know, work with reentry programs for nonviolent criminal offenders, that's why we are looking at the three years, because it's really giving people an opportunity for reentry for nonviolent criminal activities. But when we do our screening, it's for program eligibility. The landlords are there for private landlords, so they are responsible for screening their own tenants for suitability for their particular units. And that we don't get involved with because we are not a party to their lease agreement with their tenant and what their requirements are. We have that half contract between the housing authority and the landlords, which governs, you know, how we'll pay, the assistance, the family obligations, landlord obligations, and things of that nature. But we don't screen participants for landlords. And so that's why we, and we follow the guidelines as far as privacy when we obtain those criminal records.
Makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Members of the board, there was a second question at the last meeting regarding assistance by non-citizens. And Ms. Seefus explained that if one member of the household is not a citizen, but the other members of the household are eligible citizens, then there's a proration, and that's reflected in the Code of Federal Regulations that the funding will be prorated accordingly. I'm not sure if there were any additional questions.
Is that an answer question?
I have one additional question right now, and that would be regarding, there was additional language that said, that added a penalty. It was the red line, I'm looking out for the copy on the computer here. There was a red line paragraph that added the penalty, and there was a requirement that law enforcement agencies within the jurisdiction are prohibited, and they have to sign this in front of an attorney, as I recall, are prohibited from standing in the way of nonviolent protests. And so my question, that data, Mr. Keller, was, in this, is nonviolent defined? So if people were merely breaking things and not hurting people in this building, would the sheriff be able to stop them if we signed that agreement? That's the big concern, as far as that goes. The enforcement mechanism in that against law enforcement connected to a grant like this.
I've got another attorney coming up here.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh. I believe that's regarding a different HUD agreement, so.
I'm sorry. It was paragraph eight, and I'm confusing it with section eight. My apologies.
That's okay. I'll turn it over to.
So, because I don't want, I need to stick to the agenda item that we're dealing with. So.
I'm good.
You're good. On the agenda item we're working with.
Yes.
Today, right now. Okay. Do you have anything else?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Just if I could just add on Supervisor Kavanaugh's question, you know, regarding the sheriff and his involvement in that. I do believe that is.
I call for order of the day, Mr. Chairman. You've already said that we're not dealing with that issue, right? So I would call for the order of the day.
I will allow my counselor to explain. He hasn't even finished his thought. Can you?
Well, Roberts Rule says that you can call for the order of the day and interrupt somebody, and then you have to take a vote on it. So I'm saying, you have already ruled that we're not talking about the issue.
No, I didn't say that.
You didn't rule.
I wanted to be clear on which issue we were talking about.
Right. We're talking about this one, the Section 8, not paragraph eight from the other item. So we have to have a vote on my call for the order of the day.
So.
To the schedule.
We'll have a vote on the call for the order of the day. And I would phrase it as whether or not Counselor, the attorney, can continue with his thoughts and explanation of the proceeding at this point. Is that close enough? Are you good?
Well, point of order, we would have to have the parliamentarian, the attorney, tell us if that is, if that would be a correct motion, Mr. Chairman.
That is correct. I did.
Okay. He gave me, now he's giving me a verbal. All in favor in allowing the county attorney to go forward with his statement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Nice to have it. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only comment I was going to make was that we have calendared Mr. Kavanaugh's question regarding the sheriff's ability in those situations for the 15th, if I am not wrong. The sheriff has committed to coming and addressing the board on that item.
Thank you. Okay. Back to item number 10. Ms. Connor, did you have anything else that you were going to?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, but no, those were the two questions that were raised in the last meeting, so I believe that is everything I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Goodman, do you have something?
Just to be, for clarification, there is nothing related in this particular agenda item that would interfere with any law enforcement at all.
Absolutely not.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Board's pleasure on item number 10.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the revision to Section 8 administrating plan for rental assistance programs funded by HUD as of August 25, 2021.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Nice to have it. Thank you, Alonda. Okay. Brings us to item number 11, which is my item that, does anybody on the board have anything they would like to see on a future agenda, either in a report or specific to procedures and policies? Supervisor Goodman.
Mr. Chair, over the course of the last several months, there's been a lot of discussion in regards to APN numbers and minor land splits that I spoke a little bit with our assessor's office, and I know that our county staff, along with the assessor's office, is working to move things quicker. And so I'd like to ask that we do an agenda item, part of a work session, so that we can have those two entities come together and talk about how they're working together to help expedite some of the concerns of our builders.
Can I ask you to include lot combos? Because.
Yeah. I would love, I would love a definition on Walcat subdivisions in a part of that.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
An agenda item for the last board meeting in September, I'd like to add a discussion of the establishment of an ethics, Board of Supervisor Ethics Committee. And a second item would be the Board of Supervisor Management Efficiency and Waste Reduction Committee.
Staff, did you pick up on that? Taking notes? Anybody good? Anything else? Hey, gentlemen? Speedy's adjourned.